Robin, please.
Mr. McNulty?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Ms. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Bellis?
Well, we'd like to, could you please be quiet at this point? We call this meeting to order, please. No. Thank you. We'd like to get this started. See a lot of you have shown up tonight.
Hello, hello, hello. Let's get started.
Go ahead, Robin. You can tell us over here.
All right. So I will begin the staff report. I will say for those standing in the back, we do have a few more chairs over here. If you're more comfortable standing, then that is fine. All right. So we are here for a rezoning case, C O N dash twenty-three dash zero-three. The applicant is John Wicks. This rezoning request is for a property located at two-nine-five-five East Orange Road. This is a request to rezone approximately eleven-point-six-eight-four acres of land. Currently zoned farm residential to a single-family planned residential district for twenty-three single-family residential homes. There are three parcels in total that are part of the rezoning request. Site is located on the south side of East Orange Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone the three farm residential lots to single-family planned residential and split the current parcel into twenty-three single-family residential lots. The proposed development will comply with single-family planned residential standards with the exception of the four divergences that are requested. The divergences pertain to number of lots on a single acre, side and rear setbacks, and maximum lot coverage. Property is surrounded to the north by a single-family planned residential district, to the south, to the east by farm residential, and to the west is also a single-family planned residential as well as farm residential property. On the next page of the staff report, you can see the aerial photograph showing the three parcels in question. The twenty-eighteen Orange Comprehensive Plan refers to these parcels. They are located in subarea eleven of the twenty-eighteen Land Use Plan, Land Orange. That plan recommends single-family infill development with a maximum density of two units per acre with centralized sewer. The proposed rezoning does comply with this recommendation from the Comprehensive Plan. On the following page, you can see the proposed site plan provided by the applicant, showing how the three lots would be combined and then split into twenty-three separate lots with additional communal open space. In terms of development standards, we'll start off with density and unit count. They are proposing twenty-three single-family homes. That is compliant with the maximum permitted density. The total gross density of this development would be one-point-nine-seven units per acre. Open space would comply with single-family planned residential standards. The standard minimum is twenty percent. This plan is proposing twenty-five-point-one percent. Parking would comply with standards. Minimum floor area for each dwelling. The development text is proposing eighteen-hundred square feet as a minimum, which exceeds the requirement of one-thousand square feet. Mobile homes are not permitted within this planned residential district. For landscaping, there are three trees specifically called out, Norway spruce, autumn lace maple, and blue-rub juniper trees to be planted throughout the district, both for the purposes of street trees and beautification outside the right-of-way as well as screening for neighboring properties. In terms of the lots themselves, minimum lot depth and width are reduced for some lots as permitted with single-family cluster housing. We will call out that although they are not specifically mentioned as divergences due to the permitted use of cluster housing, eight of the twenty-three proposed lots would be smaller than single-family planned residential standards. Those lots being one through seven and then lot ten. In terms of the lots, two divergences are requested for reduced side and rear setbacks, and then one divergence is requested for maximum lot coverage. So the four total divergences. The first one is from section ten-point-zero-seven-A, maximum units on a single acre. Divergence is requested to allow more than three dwellings per acre, so cluster housing, as defined in section ten-point-zero-three-C, can be built. Development still complies with the overall gross density of two dwelling units per acre. A second divergence is requested from section ten-point-zero-seven-E. The side yard setback divergence of five feet is requested, reducing the minimum side yard setback to seven-and-a-half feet from twelve-and-a-half feet. It would still be compliant with our structure separation requirement in section twenty-one-point-zero-three, which requires fifteen feet between any structures. A third divergence is requested from ten-point-zero-seven-G. The rear yard setback divergence of ten and thirteen feet is requested, reducing the setback from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet for structures and then twelve feet for accessory structures. And then the fourth and final divergence requested is for maximum lot coverage, which would increase the maximum allowed lot coverage per property from twenty-five percent to thirty-two percent. In terms of additional staff comments, this is just a technical thing in the text. There were architectural design guidelines that were included in the application, which makes reference to front porches being able to encroach on the front build line by no more than six feet. Staff finds this acceptable, but we do recommend adding provision to the development text itself to remove any ambiguity as to the front setbacks. In terms of other agencies and their reviews, the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission did recommend conditional approval of this rezoning request at their meeting on August thirty-one, subject to four conditions or recommendations from the regional planning staff. The first being that the new drive location should be worked out with the new property owner prior to the township approving the rezoning request. Second being that the minimum side yard setback should be less than ten feet. Third, the minimum rear yard setback should not be less than thirty feet. And then, four, the required minimum lot size width and depth should be met. Again, those are recommendations from Delaware County Regional Planning Staff. The Delaware County Engineer and Orange Township Operations Department did have some comments, which I will not go into detail on, but they are there in the staff report. In terms of the fire department, this site layout has been submitted, and the applicant has met with Orange Fire Department staff, but they have not approved the layout at this time. For staff recommendation, zoning staff does recommend approval of this application, provided that staff comments are addressed to the satisfaction of the zoning commission. I do understand that the applicant is considering reworking some of the layout to adjust the access on Orange Road, and obviously, we would recommend that the zoning commission take that into account. That concludes the staff report.
The applicant, come forward and tell us about your development. I guess on the front of this, with respect to the staff recommendations and the recommendations that you've heard, is that something you're considering?
From regional planning or from?
Yeah, from regional planning and the staff here.
Well, I did take a little bit of exception. Excuse me, sorry. John Wicks with Real Property Design and Development. I'm the owner, along with my wife, of the property. I did take exception at the Regional Planning Commission meeting because their comments didn't, they didn't discuss the concept of cluster housing, which is part of our application. And so they had suggested that each lot should comply with the minimum size requirements of S F P R D, which, which we can do, but that takes away the idea of clustering some of the homes up front and allowing us to have twenty-five percent open space. So I talked to Robin about that, and, you know, other than that, yeah, we're fine with working out the entry.
All right, go ahead and tell us.
Sure. As I said, I'm John Wicks with Real Property Design and Development. Here to present Orange Cove, which is a new residential, single-family development across Orange High School. We truly hope that the township and the community will get behind the project. My wife and I have been Orange Township residents since two thousand and eight, and we purchased this property in two thousand and fourteen and raised our four kids through the middle and high school years at that location. We acquired the additional properties out front in twenty-eighteen, which gives us the total of about eleven-point-seven acres. We've always supported the school and the EMS levies and paid our taxes accordingly. And with our kids now grown, we're thinking, we're just now thinking ahead of, you know, what our next stages in life are going to be. And that's what brings us here tonight. So prior to submitting this application, I did come in and have a meeting, an informal meeting with a couple of the zoning commission members, as well as with Robin, just to look at the blank slate and see what does this area look like it should be relative to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And it was pretty clear from the onset that it should be single-family residential. Everything north of Orange Road is single-family residential with the exception of one with a church. And then, of course, you got the school on the south side of Orange Road, which serves, you know, the school and the church service the community, the residential community. So the single-family residential is really the only, the only concept in play. So consequently, the proposal before you includes twenty-three single-family homes that conform to Article ten of the zoning code, which is single-family planned residential or S F P R D. I originally laid this subdivision out with twenty-three lots. Each meeting that minimum ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, minimum seventy-five-foot width and a hundred-and-thirty-five-foot depth. And I was able to get just over twenty percent of open space that way. But I felt that with the newer section of the code, which talks about cluster housing, that there was a more responsible way to develop it. And I'd like to read that section of the code, just for the record. So it says, "For purposes of this section, cluster housing shall mean a residential development wherein the overall density is consistent with that provided in section ten-point-zero-seven-A. For a single-family planned residential district, but modifications are permitted in lot size and shape to concentrate residential development in a portion of the overall tract, thereby maintaining the remainder of the tract as permanent common open space." So it references section ten-point-zero-seven-A, which discusses intensity of use, specifically two dwelling units per acre maximum. And there's a caveat in there to having three units for any single acre, which really is in conflict with the definition of cluster homes. So while the S F P R D code allows for cluster housing, which by definition is smaller clustered lots, it does not provide for specific standards for those lots. And that is the reason we had to request the divergences, really to bring us in compliance with that cluster housing concept. If the code had dictated size setbacks, percent coverage, et cetera, we wouldn't have needed the divergences. The cluster concept at the front of the property makes sense for a number of reasons. Obviously, the most important is it enables us to preserve a lot more of the natural green space down below, which is, you know, twenty-five percent versus twenty percent. It's just a beautiful, natural scenic space back there, and it really deserves to be, to be preserved. It places more of the lots closer to Orange Road and the schools, which is important for walkability and safety. And our analyses, as well as most real estate analyses, indicate that today, custom home buyers want larger homes on smaller lots. So with that, those three reasons, we thought the cluster concept was the more responsible and appropriate application here. If it's not supported by the zoning commission, that's fine. As I said, we have a concept that does work and meets all those minimum requirements, but the trade-off would be the open space. So just a few highlights of this, and I'd like to put, Robin, do you have access to that?
What exactly would you like to see?
The colored rendering that I emailed later to that?
While he's pulling that up, on the trade-off of the open space, if you don't do the cluster housing, just bring it down to twenty percent?
Yeah, my layout would put it right around twenty-point-six percent. So it would still meet the minimum requirement. I just, as I said, I feel like it's a better layout this way.
And one other quick question, but the number of houses will remain the same?
That's correct. That's correct, yes. Which is just under two-point-zero. So this is not part of your zoning package. I put together this exhibit after I had met with the school and the county and the township to see how the intersection might, might look across the street from Orange High School. And in doing so, it just, it dawned on me that none of my exhibits really show the breadth of the preserved space, and I think this does a much better, much better job of showing what's being preserved and the extent of the existing trees that are being saved. So other highlights of the project that we haven't talked about is it is consistent with Abbey Knoll and Cross Creek and McCammon Chase and Wilshire and Walkerwood. It's the same zoning with the same number of homes per acre. In this instance, we're able to preserve twenty-five percent open space, which is more than the minimum requirement by quite a bit, by five percent. We've committed to four-sided architecture on each of the homes. There will be a cluster mailbox kiosk near the entry, which will service each of the homes and replace individual mailboxes on the road. The entry feature, we propose to match that with McCammon Chase because we just think that's fantastic looking and I think a real good, would be a great entry for this subdivision as well. And of course, we've got public streets with all public utilities, including sewer, water, and gas. So in August, the Regional Planning Commission recommended conditional approval, and I set up meetings with the county and the township and the school district following that meeting because I wanted to talk about the one condition, the major condition, which was the location of that drive. And for that reason, I'm willing to align that as shown here. And I would like to request, I guess, if the timing is correct, to request this to be tabled to a date and time certain in the future so I can make those changes and any other changes we talk about. And we would also add to this an R R F B in Crosswalk, which is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, I learned, which is similar to what's just outside of your driveway here. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm here for questions.
One for Robin. Oh, for Robin, tell me about the cluster housing relatively new, right?
I believe so. It was before my time when that was inserted, but yes.
Because that came about just based on some needs, and I think you addressed some of those. And that still very, very much meets our code and our, what is in our book.
Do we know of any other communities that have cluster housing? Do you know what that looks like or?
I mean, conceptually, yes, but including some of the rezonings that were approved last year, but none that kind of utilized that portion of the code as their basis, no. At least not off the top of my head.
At least not for, let's call it, single-family homes. There's lots of other cluster housing for standalone condos, EPCOM. Yeah, there is, there's lots of examples in Orange Township. And we see it about everywhere.
And the configuration, if the cluster housing is not done, I understand the, you know, taking roughly five percent of the green space away, but is the configuration still primarily the same or what changes?
It'd be primarily the same. We'd have to remove some of the front lots, two or three of them, and place them in the back, which would kind of take over some of that green space. And it's important to mention that we're not talking about any smaller homes on these lots than what would go on the larger lots. These are going to be large, custom homes, which is one of the reasons we asked for the reduced setbacks, so that they can utilize more of the yard. That is becoming a trend in all of real estate, especially with new construction. But, you know, in no way decreases the value of any of the lots or homes that are going to be in the neighborhood.
The yards are going to be smaller, but the house structure will be larger on this.
Than typical, yes. Than a typical, single-family development in Orange Township. Yeah. But it's a lot like a lot of the condo developments, where you, these structures are pretty big. And that tends to be, that seems to be the trend right now, where people just want less to maintain and they want to utilize the interior spaces. And then one of the other variances was to allow for smaller setbacks for pools and accessory structures and that sort of thing, because people want to have a nice space out in their backyard, a designated space, and that's what we're catering to.
The minimum square footage is a thousand, and you said that these will average about eighteen-hundred. Is that correct?
The minimum will be eighteen-hundred. We expect that they'll be larger than that. Yeah, we went, your code says a minimum of a thousand, and I don't see any thousand-square-foot homes in this.
Right, right. That's right. Just want to make sure. So your, your minimum size will be eighteen-hundred?
Correct.
That's what you anticipate, they'll be larger than that?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, the house sample that you buy is more than eighteen-hundred.
For sure, yeah. Yeah, but each of those shown there would fit on these lots.
We are willing to table this, but I, besides everybody's here, I'm going to give everybody a chance to speak since you've shown up tonight. That's not a problem. But we are going to table this to whatever, wherever we can, we can work out. That's not a problem.
Sure.
What do you think you need?
I beg your pardon?
What do you think you need for time?
Probably a month. I'm going to be traveling, so sometime in October would be fine.
Okay. Have a date in October, Robin?
So the two meeting dates in October would be October tenth and October twenty-fourth.
I would say October twenty-fourth is safer.
Okay.
For me, to make sure I can get everything done and presented back to you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, well, we're here from everyone who's here. We'd like to keep it to three minutes, and we'd also like to ask that you not repeat comments that have already been made. They've already been made, somebody's made them, and you have three minutes. And come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Hillary Houston. I am going to ask for some leeway on the three minutes because I've communicated with a group of neighbors who just do not feel comfortable staying here today.
Are you going to be a spokesman for this?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I'm also a spokesman for my husband, who cannot be here. So if you could just provide me a little leeway, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
My name is Hillary Houston. I'm at twenty-seven eighty-nine East Orange Road. You can't see on the page you have up on there, but I'm in one of the two white houses on Orange Road across from the schools. My husband and I have been in Orange Township since two thousand and six. We first were residents of McCammon Chase before we built our home on Orange Road. I'm an attorney, a partner in a large law firm downtown. My husband is in law enforcement. We have three kids, and they all attend Ole and T and G Local Schools at all three schools that are on Orange Road. I'm here tonight, though, to speak as a concerned neighbor and to represent the neighbors that we have got together in the short notice that we were given. To be quite honest, we were a little blindsided, at least most of us, with regard to this specific plan of twenty-three houses on what was, I think, most of us expected not to be a developed property or high-density developed property, I should say. We're going to focus on at least five things that we would like the board to take into consideration. We've touched on a couple of those, and I have a neighbor that will speak to a couple of these items. We want to talk about the four divergences. And I do want to take, the only thing I'm going to say on that issue before I hand it off to the neighbor here, Carl Von Viteer, is that we do take issue with the one-point-nine-seven density calculation. I think that does not take into account the property. There is a large, steep ravine that kind of cuts through here, and you can see there, it's not really open green space. The reason I know this is that my property backs up to this large ravine, and it's very steep, something that I do not see in the development plan. Perhaps the board can provide some information on this point. I was told that there's a federally protected swath that runs with the ravine. It was something I had addressed, my husband and I addressed, when we built our property, and we had to make certain revisions to our property and had to jump through a number of hoops to avoid that. So it's something I would like the board maybe to look into with regard to the federal protected swath.
Delaware County is going to decide all that.
Okay.
Delaware County Planning already seeing this.
Okay.
I would believe from here that that wasn't an issue for them or they would have caught it at that very meeting. I hear what you're saying, but.
Yeah. And to that, Mr. McNulty, I have communicated with Delaware County. It was a little new. Apparently, they've had some staff turnover. I've shared my development plans from when we split our four acres to two acres, which clearly identified the swath and also identified what is described as a, a stream corridor protection boundary back there. There is some confusions to what that entails. They are looking into it. I love the fact that this is going to be tabled because it will allow us a little bit more time, because we do feel a little bit rushed, obviously. But I'll let Mr. Voltaire talk to that. My pushback on one-point-nine-seven acres is that that's not, or one-point-nine-seven homes per acre is not realistic because that's not what can be developed because there's this large, steep ravine. I'll leave that to you to, to consider further. We also have safety and traffic concerns. Lack of the traffic study, it does appear that one is going to be provided. The traffic analysis, which is unsourced, is of little value to us. The traffic and safety, both during and after construction, is a concern, especially given that it's a single-road access, both in and out, and it comes out into a school zone. It's a high-travel, two-lane road, especially during school hours. I know I live on it, many of my neighbors do as well. There's a proposed that there can be a right-in and right-out, and that's somehow going to solve those issues. There's one right across the street at the Orange High School, and I can tell you, that has not solved the issues. It actually has created more traffic issues and safety concerns with people doing U-turns in the middle of Orange Road during high-traffic areas or high-traffic times and even using many of the driveways on Orange Road, including mine, to turn around. So just something else to consider. We have, and this is perhaps the biggest concern we have. I know I do, even though my property does not butt to this proposed development. We have concerns that this is just the beginning, that there will be additional high-density development. We think this could be phase one. There'll be phase two, there could be phase three. And the reason we have concerns is that Mr. Wicks has approached every adjoining property owner trying to buy their property. I don't think it's to buy the property and leave the homes as is. It's to demolish those properties and expand. So I don't think this is a twenty-three house, housing, housing development. I think it could be a hundred-and-twenty-three. I think it could be two-hundred-and-twenty-three. I think eventually, if all my other neighbors would sell, I'll get a knock on my door. I just built my home, we're not going anywhere. That's what I'm concerned about. And with that comes all sorts of concerns, obviously, with regard to property values, where you're having, having this high-density area and losing all of our natural resources. And that brings us to one of the last points with regards to home values. And there are some other neighbors that are not as, not as impacted that I think will speak to this, but it's something the most impacted neighbors want to talk to as well. Home values could be reduced based upon the fact that we're losing these natural, what Mr. Wicks described as the natural, beautiful space and being replaced by high-density, and high-density neighborhood. Also, a prolonged construction period could, could result in this. We all know the housing market is slowing. We all know interest rates are high. Some residential reports are saying that Ohio's home sales fell as much as thirteen-point-five percent in the last year. I lived in McCammon Chase. Maybe you know it, maybe you don't, but I lived through what happened in two thousand and eight. We had just built our home in two thousand and six. There were homes in that subdivision that sat empty, half-built, vacant lots where my kids would play. I'd have to watch them like a hoss with open construction pits. I implore this board to consider the possibility of that happening here. I hope that it doesn't, but you can't guarantee that it won't. Mr. Wicks can't guarantee that it won't. So I think what we're here is, and again, we're not here to push back against development, not here to even push back against Mr. Wicks' development plan. We want responsible development, we want transparency. And with that, then, when you're talking about a hundred homes, even twenty-three homes, the home values can also turn on the fact, or turn on an important fact of the school district being redistricted. Again, I can speak to this as someone, and I can speak to this as someone that lived in McCammon Chase, and there are people here, and I know they will talk to this, maybe a little repetitive, but theirs is going to be a little bit more personal than mine. I lived in McCammon Chase, and the ten years we lived there, our middle school was redistricted two or three times. My kids went from Orange Middle to Brookshire, Orange Middle, and then this past year, they were on the chopping block again. So I think it's naive to think that even twenty-three houses wouldn't tip that scale and that the neighbors in McCammon Chase or even McCammon Estates, next time things are redistricted, they get shipped, their kids get shipped fifteen miles up north. That hurts property value. No one wants to be in a subdivision, move into a subdivision where they don't know where their kids are going to school. But I'm getting a little emotional there because my kids are directly impacted. But I guess the bottom line is here, we're really happy that Mr. Wicks has asked it to table, asked you all to table this. We would like additional time. I'd like additional time to talk to Mr. Wicks. The only conversations we've had, I have not had, but neighbors, I talk for the neighbors, is when he's trying to purchase their property. This twenty-three housing, this twenty-three-house development, development plan, they knew nothing about it, not the twenty-three houses. Just one additional point, and this is just off what Mr. Wicks said as he was standing up here, and the plan that's up there now. Lot 9 has no access to a driveway, so I'm not sure about that. 1,800 square feet, that's not a large house. The plans are lovely, I will say, the plans are lovely that he puts in there, it looks like Evans Farms, which is lovely, lovely, I love those homes. They're not really guaranteeing that, we have no guarantee that it's gonna be 1,800-square-foot homes or larger, and that could hurt the home value, and be a negative effect on the schools. If you don't have that price point of about $400,000, it's a net tax loss to the schools. So I apologize, I know I went way over, but I wanted to get these points out there.
Let me speak to a couple of those, 1,800 feet, that's in the contract in this, that is guaranteed, what he stated, what he could approve would be guaranteed. Orange Township or Delaware County controls the roads and the traffic studies.
Yeah.
Delaware County, you'll have the time, and they'll be able to speak to the other issue that you brought up that affected you. And we'll have to see whether it affects this or not, and they would, if it did, we'll hear about it.
And I appreciate that, and we look forward to that communication, so that we have some input in it. And I know traffic by itself isn't a reason to deny, you know, I'm an attorney, I do know that, that's not a reason to deny it by itself, but I think this is unique, it's in a school zone. We have kids, it's a busy area, there's a walking path. I hold my breath every time I hear the cars racing between our roundabouts now, I'm just waiting for an accident, and to think that we're gonna make it even more of a problem, it worries me as a mom, as a neighbor, and as a resident. I'll leave, Mr., my neighbor's gonna talk about the divergences more in a minute.
Good evening, Carl Von Veltier, 6840 Castleberry Mills Court. My wife and I are among the 10-plus homeowners in the Abbey Knoll subdivision who have lived here for between 15 to 20 years, and whose property either abuts Mr. Wicks' parcel or has a direct, unobstructed line of sight to it. Each one of us chose our respective home location in no small part because of wooded boundary on the adjoining parcels and the privacy afforded by it. And Rockford Homes recognized as much by charging us each a lot premium on each of the homes for the desirability of the location and setting. You've discussed the, I was gonna go into the Planning Commission's recommendations, we've discussed that, but I just wanted to review real quick. Rear yard setback, side yard setback, maximum number of homes on any single acre, lot coverage, meaning maximum home size, and modifications to the reduced lot size which are permitted. The Planning Commission cited these as out of character for the area, and recommended reducing the number of lots. There's been talk online about whether or not Mr. Wicks, well, that's what I read in the meeting minutes anyways, so...
Well, I think what they didn't take into consideration, the fact that our zoning considers cluster housing, that is absolutely true, but I'm not sure I saw any of the rest of that. They didn't accept the cluster housing, which of course, that gets you into those setback divergences.
Well, I understand that, I'm just telling you what I read, and the reason I point that out is because it's what we would all like to see as well, is reduction in the number of homes, so that's the only point I wanted to make there. So there's been some talk online and on social media about whether or not this project constitutes high-density housing. The SF, what is it, SFPR zoning district is the highest density, single-family housing in the zoning code, and these requested divergences and modifications to the zoning code only serve to increase that density beyond what's otherwise required or permitted by the zoning code. In fact, it's stated right in the development plan, the reason for requesting the divergences is for greater flexibility in property utilization. So about the density, according to the Orange Cove landscaping plan, most of the wooded buffer zones on our property boundaries will be eliminated. They'd have to be with this kind of housing density. And these free buffers would be easily preserved if we were talking about putting just a couple of homes on the existing zoning district of Farm Residential. But with 23 homes planned, instead of wooded privacy in our backyards, now we're gonna be looking at another subdivision, and our new neighbors will be closer still with the reduced rear yard setbacks. I think it's safe to say that if the Orange Cove subdivision were already built when we bought ours, Rockford couldn't have charged the lot premiums that they did. This development will decrease our home values, apparently there's some disagreement about that, but we've talked to some people, authoritative people on that, and I believe, and I think many of the people behind me have a reason to believe that our home values will go down. We are concerned about that, and the diminishment in the home values and quality of life in the yard. The Orange Township zoning resolution states that when approving applications, you shall consider, among other things, whether the proposed development advances the general welfare of the township and the immediate vicinity. So I would ask you, with regard to the divergences in the housing density in this proposal, whose welfare, other than Mr. Wicks, is being served? I've spoken to every one of the 20 or more homeowners that abut this parcel, and none of us want this development, as we have great concerns, that I already mentioned, about property values and quality of life. So I would submit to you that the general welfare, the general welfare of the township is not being served by this. So as Ms., well, this goes to the tabling of the procedure, I was gonna request the tabling of the procedure and emphasize that we were all blindsided by this, not knowing anything about this up until 12 days ago, so I do hope that you will consider tabling this hearing to a future, or tabling this decision to a future hearing. Thank you.
It will be, October 24th.
The day already.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Can I ask you for clarification? Could you put the map up that shows the three, the boundaries of the various properties? I wanted to schedule through that pretty fast.
Um, yeah, I'll blow something.
Sorry, I'm wrong.
I'll look at it while you're off. Does this work for you? Or do you want, what was it, number 4?
That works, yeah.
Name and address, sir?
Gary Casiba, 2975 East Orange Road. We're neighbors on the east side border of the development. If we can look at the previous slide, you probably see better where our property is. Can we go back to the other one? Okay, at the top of the slide, you see our driveways are kinda light pale area, and it's, I have three points to really present related to our concerns. Betty and I have lived there for 40-some years, so we were here before this happened. The first issue that I was going to mention, and it's been addressed a little bit, is a safety issue, and I just wanted to point out that we've experienced the concerns about the safety issue, and I'm glad that it will be addressed, because left-turning into our driveway is always with exiting traffic and people that are not exiting out the proper lane cause a concern when there's incoming traffic, you have to stop, you never know who's gonna hit you. So I'm glad that that's been concerned, being addressed. The major issue that we have is with, related to the driveway. Our driveway, up until last year, our driveway's been lined by trees on both sides of the driveway. The trees on the west side were cut down last year. Our trees on the east side are accolade elm trees that align our side of the driveway. The driveway is a shared driveway with the Wicks, and we own, each of us own 25 feet of the driveway, and then we have an easement on the opposing 25-foot for access to the property. According to the drawing, and I don't know exactly where this is exactly positioned, but the proposed street almost abuts our driveway, it might, there's minimal space between them, which eliminates the option for trees or some kind of barrier planting or anything between our driveway and the development driveway. So it really looks like at some point, the curb would probably be right on our driveway almost, and Mr. Wicks can address that, I guess, more directly. Without the option for trees, it's kind of an unsightly appearance, where you have a driveway right next to the street access. Providing access to the proposed street was something that Mr. Wicks presented to me yesterday, and that would provide access for us, but would involve destruction of our driveway, and our trees then, the line of trees, they're about 25 to 30-foot tall trees now, would be disproportionately displaced away from the, it would just look odd. Okay, so it's an unsightly appearance, two driveways together, no tree barrier between the two. Okay, so that's one. The third concern is the attraction for this property, really for us, was the ravine, the rural character of the area when we moved in it, and also it was the woods at the back. And I don't know if it has legal consideration, but with the development in the back, it basically takes away some of the value of our woods, which joins the house in the back of the house, so it seems to affect the value of our property. And I have one other concern about the water retention pond adjacent to site number 17 on the drawing. That site 17, I don't know exactly where that place, but I think that that's filled with trees now, it's a tree-filled area, and that area has flooded in the past, it's flooded, I've seen it flood many times, and we see our property flood, so it is in a flood-prone area, I don't know the details of the elevations and things, whether you could get it a high enough barrier that that wasn't an issue, but it is tree-covered, you would have to remove the trees, and then you would have to raise the retention pond dike in order to retain water in that retention pond. Those are the issues for me, thank you very much.
Mr. Wicks, is there a retention pond that was required in your development, or not? I'm not saying there should be, I'm just kinda...
Yes, sir, there are two retention ponds, one on either side of the ravine.
Okay.
As shown on the drawing.
Okay, and so those would be built because of your development, right?
Well, sure.
Yeah.
All developments require...
That's what I was asking, just making...
Sure, yeah.
Those things, those kind of things are new technology, they take care of all the water issues. They just simply do. Go ahead, you can continue to laugh, you drive by these every day on your way to work and not even paying attention to this.
This is a tree-lined area.
Is there anyone else like to speak? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Scott Shipkowski, I live in 2883 East Orange Road. It's the house directly west of lot number 7. I just wanted to let you, stand before you and express my opposition about this new proposed development. I'm opposed to being really, really close to my house. Lot number 7 is gonna be almost 40 feet off my property line. My wife and I just moved in to our home about three months ago, so we're very new to the neighborhood. We are very ecstatic to live in Orange Township. Its reputation for its school is very outstanding. We're worried about our home value drastically decreasing. Our home is much smaller than all the other homes in the area. This new development threatens to disrupt the peaceful setting we have in our home, which attracts us in the first place to the area, our desire for a more rural-like setting, while also maintaining asset accessibility to the urban amenities. Most of our home's value comes from the wooded nature, our distance from our neighbors, and the rural-like setting. With these new large homes being built so close to our house, our house is gonna be even more out of place than it already is, and our home value is gonna drop because of this. These homes are gonna be easily twice the size of my home. In addition, I wanted to, it's my understanding that Orange Township has the following goals and strategies pertaining to natural resources, as described in the 2017 Planning Orange Natural Resources and Conservation Assessment. It's my understanding that it's Orange Township's goals to protect natural resources and farmland through the use of conservation easements, to designate buffer areas around wooded areas and bodies of water, which this is previously cited by the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission regarding this development, to maintain and enhance suitable habitat wildlife, cultivate native ecosystems that encourage native wildlife, as well as others. So preserving these natural assets is essential for our community's sustainability, so I implore you all to consider the long-term environmental, social, economic effects of this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Corwin, 3114 Abbey Knoll Drive. My wife and I have lived there, lived there since 2006, actually, you know, we've been residents of Orange Township since 2002, and the reason, as was mentioned before, one of the reasons we moved to the lot we're in now is because of the setting. We gladly agreed to pay the lot premium to have the wooded back lot. Our lot is abutting the development, it's right-beat by lot 23 in the diagram up there. I don't really have a lot to add, I did wanna point out a couple things, as Carl mentioned, the three factors that must be considered in this rezoning application, and the first is that it's, the development be consistent in all respects with the purpose, intent, and general standards of the zoning resolution. Then if you look at Article 2, Section 2.01, one of the goals and one of the purposes is to conserve and protect natural resources in scenic areas. And then, of course, if you look at Article 3, Section 3.01, you see that the provisions of the zoning regulations are minimum standards that must be met, and I don't think that's being met here. While cluster housing might be one option, another option is simply to have less houses and abide by the setbacks in the side, the rear. I am concerned, based on that, that it will have an impact, not only on our own enjoyment of our property, having trees removed and a development right behind us, but also the home values. That's all I have, thank you very much for your consideration.
You know, just a question in general, real quick. The other developments that are around this area, just a general thing, any of them had, and I may not know the answer, neither of you may have done some research on it, but any of them had any divergence with respect to the setbacks that, you know...
I will have to do some research on that, Mr. Pierce.
So just those, you know, immediately around, what is their setback story? And then, just real quick, if I may, John, when you looked at this development initially, before you decided to request the divergences with respect to setbacks and so forth, did you come up with a number of homes that could fit on the property, or did you just say, this is kinda...
We can fit 23 homes that meet the minimum standards if clusters not desired. It just, all it does is reduces the open space down to, closer to the minimum required, which we don't think is appropriate.
You went to the divergence of setbacks, if none of those were approved, you still would get 23 homes in there?
Yes, yes. The issue with the setbacks really is so that we can have the same size homes on somewhat smaller lots, which is not gonna decrease the value, it's gonna allow it more flexibility in the design of a home on a lot. If we widen the setbacks, if we widen the lots and we widen the setbacks, you still get the same building footprint. So that's really the trade-off.
Mr. Wicks, are most of those divergences on those, first, on those homes off... Mr. Wicks, are most of those divergences on those, first, on those homes at the, at the front?
That's correct, and I failed to mention that before. It's, it's on the eight lots that are considered clustered. The remaining, the remaining lots are, do meet the minimum standard, including all the lots in the back. They, they have the township minimum standard setbacks.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Based on the comments that have been made so far. If we look at what's gonna be the backyards of 19 through 23, you, the drawing seems to indicate that there's a, a tree line between that and the border of the property. So those are existing trees that are going to be retained, is that correct?
Yeah, we proposed a 25, I put my glasses on here, 20, I think it's a 25-foot tree preservation zone along that side of the property, but the building line is 35 feet. So there'd be 25 feet of basically a non-disturbed zone, other than removing dead or dying trees. So that tree row does, does stay in that area.
And that's also true of the side of the lot 19, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, if we slide down to lot 7, I'm seeing what looks like new trees gone.
Yeah, anything that's, so what I tried to illustrate here is I shaded the trees that are basically trees that are going to remain, and anything that's not shaded are what we consider new proposed trees to go in with the building package.
So are there no existing trees there adjacent to lot 7?
There are some scrub trees that, that are on our property, there are some trees on the adjacent property that are nice, and obviously we wouldn't touch those, but we were talking about adding to the tree buffer zone that's there now by putting more trees on our side of the property line.
So you're saying adjacent to lot 7 there, there's going to end up being a wider buffer of trees than there is currently?
Yes, because most of those trees are scrub and, and either are on their way out, they're, they're dying. So, yeah, we would...
No, no.
Okay, well, they are, but that's okay, I lived there, I know, I know. Yeah. But anyway, the, yeah, the answer is, the idea, we're not gonna plant, we're not gonna tear trees out and then plant new ones. If they're good trees, we're gonna leave them there.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I, I looked at that, and that didn't make sense to me.
Correct.
So, so this is allegedly going to enhance the, the tree buffer?
That's the intent, yes.
Even along lot 7?
That's correct. On our property, we're planting more trees than, than would be there otherwise, than are there now.
And the trees you're planting are gonna be six-foot trees, right?
I believe they'd start out at 6 feet, yes, sir. Six, six to eight feet.
Okay. Going to the issue of the adjacent driveway, what are you proposing to do in terms of potentially merging that driveway into road A?
Well, I did talk to Mr. Casiba yesterday, I believe, and we, we actually, on the drawing you see on the screen, it's different than what you have in your package, because we skewed that, the, the road over.
Right.
So in talking with the school, in talking with the county engineer, the, the distance between the current driveway access point and the road is, is far enough away that they could, it could remain as-is. And then any area further up the, the road where there's a slight encroachment within what I'm proposing to be a public right-of-way, there are three options. We could either, Mr. Casiba could either take access off of the new road. We could leave the driveway in as-is, and if it does encroach in the right-of-way, then if he wanted me to, I could go in and widen the driveway on his side of the property. Or we, there's a potential, we could look at, kinda skewing that road a little bit inward to provide more space. Mr. Casiba's concern was there's not going to be enough room between the existing edge of pavement on his driveway and the curb. There, I think there's probably at least 12 feet, and this is based on me looking at this, this exhibit right now, but there is room there between, if, if the township agreed to, this would be, I think, a variance on, on your part, but we could plant trees behind the curb. I think generally you don't like trees in your right-of-way, but if there was a, if there was an acceptable pattern of trees that the township would, would approve, then we would consider doing that.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find a win-win here.
Sure.
On, on, on the driveway issue. So you're saying you, you could create a 12-foot tree buffer between road A and the driveway?
Well, it, but it would be within the public right-of-way.
Understood.
Yeah, but we could plant trees in the public right-of-way. In fact, that, that does occur in a lot of communities, but in Delaware County, generally it does not. But there are exceptions to that.
Is there room to put a fence there?
I don't think the county or the township would wanna fence them in their right-of-way, but that would be up to you. There certainly would be room for it.
All right, so, so another, another option would be to have the driveway right as it curves down into where road A is now heading toward Orange Road, to just have that driveway open out into road A?
Yes, either there or even further up, maybe where the, where road B T-bones into road A there. That would be an option, or even further up, maybe in front of lot 13 or 14. I mean, there's, there are a number of options here. It's really not a zoning issue, it's, but we can, we can certainly try to get it resolved.
A neighborly negotiation.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause it, I mean, I, I can see a plan here that would make it so Mr. Casiba wouldn't be responsible for allowing a very long driveway, but still, but still having a way to maintain the general character of the, the access to his property. I don't know, you guys are gonna have to try and work something out there.
Go ahead, sir, your name and address?
My name is Son Pradith, 6819 Castleberry Mills Court. My house is behind lot 22, 23. I have a huge concern when it comes to the sewer. I saw the plans for the first time a couple days ago, and it looks like 23 homes will be running into one sewer line, and that sewer line sits in my backyard. I work hard maintaining that yard, and if they come in and tear up my yard, who's gonna be paying for that to repair it? As well as, there is a tree line behind there, and to Mr. Wicks' point, it looks like it's gonna be kept, but because they're gonna be running this sewer line there, there is gonna be some trees that are gonna be cut down to get that pipe to run into that sewer line. So if those trees are cut and happen to fall in my yard, who's, who's gonna maintain that, and who's gonna care for that if, if that happens to occur? And second point is, we have natural wildlife that lives back there, where there's owls, deers, countless animals that call that home. And now we're gonna displace them, and no one, no one cares about that. It seems like we'd rather just, we'd rather just benefit one person instead of worrying about destroying habitat and livelihood of our community.
Sir, I wanted to just respond real briefly to the question Mr. Pierce, Pierce had earlier, 'cause I got something that I think is noteworthy for that. Carl Von Veelte here again, 6840 Castleberry Mills Court. Mr. Pierce, I think you were asking if I understand if there are any other precedents for setbacks in other communities around Orange Township. I noticed when I was going through the meeting minutes for the Planning Commission, that the recommendations they made about what to, what to readjust the setbacks to were not the numbers from the Orange Zoning Code, they were the numbers from the Clear Creek Community. And the numbers specifically were reduced from the zoning code. In other words, the Clear Creek Community got a successful reduction, and that is now being used as a precedent for later zoning decisions. So I just wanna point that out, that if, if you, if you, if you decide to allow these reductions, that sets up a possible precedent for future zoning decisions.
Good evening, my name's Dave Provantano, 3040 Abbey Knoll. I do not back into any of those properties, but I guess I'm bringing up a few things concerned. For seven years, I was on the Abbey Knoll HOA Board. At the time, we worked with, I don't think, I don't know if it was the zoning board, the zoning board with the trustees, when the farm property on Old State and Abbey Knoll was developed. Matter of fact, we were in favor of the development. But in that, he, there was a lot of requests for various setbacks and everything else. We worked with them, and we worked with the property on that, and it went from 29 homes to 23. So the yards and everything would work. We didn't go with it. The other thing that concerns me when I look at this, and I know you do not have the fire department's report yet, but it was very important at that, and you know, there's an emergency access out inlet, or access off of Old State, because almost all properties that are developed now have to have two entrance ways for the fire to come in.
This could never be approved without fire approval.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm only seeing a cer, a single entrance into this.
And you're correct, fire hasn't, hasn't approved this yet, but this is not going anywhere without their approval. So that's, that's critical.
Okay. The other thing that we did look into was, and I don't know, I, I just found out about this Saturday, but not, but I would move you, I do know what your experience is as a builder.
You do not know what my experience is?
No, no. And we did look at Josh. Josh was a commercial builder, and we knew how he was building and everything in those homes, and you could see those are being developed, and they're being developed as very nice homes. But on this, you go catty corner, and we now have a bunch of sewer pipes sitting on Old State and Orange on the one intersection. My understanding, that's a bankrupt lot, piece of dump that we took for years to get rid of that dump at that farm. So I'm not saying not to allow it, I'm just saying, take in, consider, some consideration. And the same thing when Joshua, when we built that, he took in the consideration of the neighbors and everything with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it, is it your intent to develop the houses yourself? Are you going to be selling these lots to custom home builders?
I'm, I'm not a builder, I'm a land developer. And so I would work with custom home builders and/or individual lot purchasers who can bring their own builder in.
Just real quick, for one clarification, I read in, in the material that there was a bank letter that was from the state, your ability to take care of them, and I don't know if that's something you all saw. I didn't see it in here, you referenced it here, but we didn't necessarily do that, so.
It wasn't in the package? Okay, that, that will supplement that.
Good evening, Hussein Carey, the residence at 2929 East Orange Road, actually the lot right in the front of this development. So, in fact, I just wanted to ask first, so this is a little different from the map that we received in the mail, so this is the new proposal, I assume?
This provides a little more detail, but...
So, no, the number of, I mean, the number of lots actually around our property, there were like seven lots, I think we have reduced that to six now.
We did, we had, in order to make the change up front, we had to remove the first lot.
So this is the most recent proposal?
That's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, in general, like, in fact, when we moved in in 2017, and bought that house from Calvin's, I guess we were, we have been waiting for the lot next door to be developed. So in general, we're not against the development and construction, 'cause that lot has been, I think, kind of kept in under construction status for a long time, like, I think there is like trailers and construction equipment and, like, a lot of things there. Being built finally, I think it's actually a positive change, so that's good. But we were expecting one neigh, one neighbor in general, as you can see, there is like also already a driveway there. Now, we are gonna have seven according to the mail, at least now it is six. It's a lot different, like, just imagine coming back to the backyard with my kid now, we are gonna have like six houses that are kind of in the sense of like a condo development. I think this is not like, as you said, you call it cluster housing, and I don't understand why it should be cluster housing. I mean, like, there is a code, and it just felt wrong, and I actually went to the zoning standard that Orange Township passed, that was my first time that I actually looked into that. And the zone that you are changing to, as you said, you want to get diversions from it, and it has, it says that, that in one acre, there is a, I have written it, in one acre you can have maximum three lots. And I, I'm not saying anything against the development, as I said, I am pro it, but I really don't understand why there should be exemptions, why do we have to do that? I mean, follow the rules and build according to the code. I think it is gonna keep the character of the neighborhood. And one other thing, I know you are like insisting on number 23, because you say, I have 11 acres, 11 and a half acres, I should be able to do two per acre, so that's gonna be 23. But I think you kinda have to exclude all that ravine area from the buildable... If you exclude that, that is the buildable area. I think that has been the, I think the, the reason for that code, the reason of the language is that. I know it is not clear, it is vague, and you can interpret it in different ways, but anyway, thankfully, there is another line in the code that says in each acre of the lot, if you actually form an acre of the lot, you cannot have more than three houses. And I think that way, around our lot, based on my thinking, I think it is gonna be maximum three or maybe four lots that can be built, and a lot larger lots, like, if the kids want to have like a, I don't know, like a bounce house, there is no room for that in this, because I mean, like, they are like up to our fence, like, so I think this has to be a little redone, that's all I wanted to say. Please consider and do not unnecessarily give like diversions to like development. There is the reason for these standards and codes, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. But we, we do need to hear something different. We understand everybody here doesn't want this, that's, that's the bottom line, but if you have something different for us, great.
And sorry, can I jump in real quick here?
No, Rob.
One. So I do wanna clarify how we calculate density, so in, in planning and zoning, there are two ways to calculate density. One is gross calculation, and one is net calculation. So, for example, Berlin Township uses net calculation, where you, they do subtract the undevelopable acreage, including rights of way and natural features that can't be developed, they subtract that from the total acreage. Our code specifically states that the maximum density shall be two dwelling units per gross acre of area. So we do go by that standard, it's the gross acreage of the property and not the net.
Andy Deems, 2695 Row Drive. A couple of things that I wanted to address was I was a little concerned about the potential for flooding. On the backside of Cross Creek, we have Keaton Court, which now faces Abbey Knoll, and the reason that happened was because it was supposed to be attached, which you probably know that, and it was not attached because the creek continues to flood. So they had to completely redesign that Keaton Court, so now it opens on Abbey Knoll, even though it's still part of Cross Creek. That same concern is, I think, is applicable here, it's the exact same stream, as mentioned, it does flood. And if the county's having issues, and thank you for pointing out the set aside, because I also thought it was a protected area, but if they're having trouble figuring out that it's a federal set aside, do they really know what's going on with the flood? Okay, that's, that's number one. Number two is I'm concerned about the cars. Anybody that strives on Orange knows that during school, holy crap, cars are backed up from the school entrance up to high school all the way back to, back to the Cross Creek entrance. If these houses go in at 23, and there's just two, two cars per, per house, that's 46. Let's just go up the numbers, three is 69, four is 92, five is 115 cars. I have five cars in my house, because I have my parents live with us, I have my wife's mother that lives with us, and I have two kids who are becoming 16, and that scares the hell out of me, but that's a lot of cars. And if any of these houses are as big as mentioned, that's a crap ton of cars that's gonna be on that same road. I don't think any decision should be made. I don't know if it is or not, I'm just stating, until a traffic study is done, because holy cow, that, that's 100 and some cars.
I could assure you it won't be.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure, just wanted to bring that up.
The traffic study would always be done, the fire department has to approve it, that is all standard procedure.
Yeah, I knew it was gonna be done, I just wasn't sure of the timing, so that's good, thank you. The other concern was the children, I understand you can talk to the school. You know, the school's pretty, pretty big now, and we're talking about adding potentially, if there's two kids per house, 46 kids, upwards of 92 if we have a productive family. That's a lot of kids. And we have a development across from the fire station, I believe that's Orange, and if the neighbors decide to sell, we get more houses, that's more kids, heck, we had to cut the trees down in the roundabout so the kids wouldn't get hit now. Combine the traffic with the kids, and I'm really concerned for our neighborhood, and y'all live here, you should be too. The last thing I was gonna say was, why are we striving to meet the minimum? What? So, the only reason to increase everything so what we can do here is for more money. I mean, that's... I mean, that's. As, as he said, you know, he's very, been very proud to live in Orange Township. He's loved living here. So I assume that once this is built, you're gonna live in one of these houses?
Unknown yet. Not really, not really relevant.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing. I mean, you know, selling the property and moving on doesn't really show value. Anyway.
All right, again, if anybody else comes up, it's gotta be, I really wanna hear something,
Hi, my name is Kate Maroney. I live at 3227 Abbey Knoll Drive in McCammon Chase. I'm gonna share with you the email that I had to send to our school superintendent back in November, when our neighborhood was once again on the cusp of being redistricted. Mr. Rafe, my name is Kate Maroney and I live in McCammon Chase. My husband and I are original to the neighborhood and chose to build our home here for multiple reasons, one of which was the proximity to the schools. We have two boys, Jake, who graduated in the class of 2020, and Beck, who is in the class of 2029. Since we moved in in 20, in 2005, McCammon Chase's residents, specifically its children, have had a history of taking the brunt of an unfortunate situation caused by continually being redistricted due to overcrowding and overpopulation on the south side of our school district. Time and time again, the symptom, not the problem, which is the lack of capacity for growth on the south side of the district is ignored at our expense. When we built our home in McCammon Chase and moved in in 2005, our older son Jake, who is now at university, was four, University of Cincinnati, was four. Little did we know, the continual redistricting shuffle that we were about to experience with Olentangie Schools and our beautiful new neighborhood. Jake was redistricted to three different elementary schools, Allen Creek, Walnut Creek, and for his last three years, Freedom Trail. We were thrilled after so much churn, we could put all of the redistricting behind us and he finally had stability and would move on to Orange Middle School with his classmates. Our excitement was short-lived as our neighborhood once again got redistricted. Only this time it was the middle school. Our neighborhood tried to rally and fight it, but our voices were not heard. So instead of going to Orange Middle School with the rest of Freedom Trail, Jake and the children of McCammon Chase were sent to Berkshire Middle School. We will talk about how this logistically does not make sense in just a moment. Berkshire Middle School is a great school. That was not the issue. The issue is, after three years there, Jake's classmates went on to Olentangie High School. Jake and the children from McCammon Chase were sent to Orange High School. The feeder system was broken. After Jake graduated, McCammon Chase was once again redistricted, thankfully this time back from, from Berkshire Middle School to Orange Middle School. Looking back, I was and still am at a loss how the continually shuffling of our lack of feeder consideration is in the best interest of our children. Jake and our neighbors' children simply were treated as a headcount, caught up in an overcrowding issue, little concerned or end in sight. That was 10 years ago and here we are again, still treating the symptom, not the problem, at the expense of the children in McCammon Chase. So now it's 2022, remember this is last year. Our younger son Beck is a sixth grader at Orange Middle School. Unlike his older brother, Beck has had a very different elementary school experience. He was fortunate enough to attend Freedom Trail from kindergarten through fifth grade and go on to Orange Middle School with that same group of classmates. Since these children have been together for all six years of elementary plus one year of middle school, they have formed tight bonds, made lifelong friends. They have been through good times and bad together, including uncertain times like COVID. Since the news of a potential redistrict from Orange Middle School to Berkshire Middle School broke, Beck and his friends have expressed stress, concern, worry and disappointment. They do not want to be torn apart because of a headcount issue. They are Orange High School class of 2029 and plan on remaining united through graduation. Most concerning for me is that these kids now come home from school asking for updates if they're going to be separated from their classmates and their friends. My son asks why anyone would ever consider doing this to them and I have no answers. It's not like it's closer. Speaking of, let's talk about logistics. This'll be quick, the facts are the facts. From our home to Orange Middle School, half a mile. From our home to Berkshire Middle School, 6.4 miles. The additional time on the bus will be the equivalent of roughly an extra 45 minutes a day, which is roughly an extra four hours a week on the bus. I speak from previous experience on having been through this before. That time is valuable, valuable in the mornings and in the afternoon to parents and students. I will not belabor this point since I believe we all understand the numbers speak for themselves. So Mr. Rafe, I respectfully ask that you figure this out without impacting McCammon Chase. Our neighborhood and children have been through enough, six times. The constant transferring and back and forth from one school to another every few years has to stop. Fix the problem. Stop bumping long-term residents and students out of Orange Schools to make room for transient students that come and go from apartments and new development. Take McCammon Chase off the table for redistricting plans. Leave our children alone. Let them continue to grow together with their classmates at Orange School. I did get a response from Mr. Rafe. He actually called me personally and we spent a lot of time together on the phone. He told me the following, he was unaware of the history of redistricting in our neighborhood and he could understand my level of frustration. He said the overpopulation at Orange Middle School is primarily from ebbs and flows in the neighborhoods and empty nesters leaving and new families moving in, which they could not keep up with. He had no argument logistically busing our kids over six miles away. He said property on the south side of the district is hard to come by. And he said the school just didn't have enough resources to keep up with the increased population. So while these, this neighborhood does not back up onto my property per se, it will impact me. I'm saving this speech because I have little doubt I will need it again in years to come if developments like this continue to encroach on our district.
Please have something different.
My name's Craig Shire, I've lived here for 21 years. My address is 2841 East Orange Road. Looking on the map, I don't know if you've ever been to this property, but I would, I would urge everyone that Mr. Wick to invite to see these shrubs and these twigs, these trees that don't exist. And you can look at my property too. I live, I just, just west of there. And I have a cloned property just like his with beautiful trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
To be clear about the trees, I was talking about specifically on the, on my western property line, not the back, not where the ravine is.
But I think, you said all the stuff that's in color is new trees, right?
No.
Shaded is.
No, only the new trees are the, are the trees that aren't shaded. And the green areas that show shaded trees are existing trees to remain.
So the, the colored trees are existing? They're new. I don't see, you need to look at that problem.
They're new, those are new trees that are gonna be planted. I didn't say we're not clearing any of the property. Every development has clearing on.
What you're clearing is a lot more than what you say.
Robin, could you display the one drawing that I sent you, the comparison drawing? I prepared a drawing that shows the, the time lapse of development in this area, including my property and all your subdivisions, from 1998, the second, so that shows all the roads, if you could zoom in a little bit, sir? That shows all the roads before they were built. It shows all the tree areas before they were cleared. And then the next picture is from 2006. And that shows clearing that took place in Abbey Knoll and in McCammon Chase, partially in McCammon Chase, part of it hadn't been built yet. And Cross Creek obviously is there as well. And then as you go down further, then this is 2018. And if you go down one further, it shows 2018 with my plan on top of it. So you can see in a very similar fashion to what was done with the previous developments, I'm retaining that ravine area as much as they did. And we're, we're clearing for homes that exist in a similar nature in, in all of those surrounding neighborhoods. Lots that back up to a ravine are premium lots, they just are.
Well, some people thought at one point.
All the other developers did not touch them.
That, that's incorrect. If you go back, you'll see that they did. They cleared a lot of wooded areas that aren't actually in the ravine. That's not all ravine. The back of my property is not all ravine. There's five acres there. Ravine is not all of the back area. It's just this, and saying that it is doesn't make it so. Of course it's natural. So was all the other property. Okay, we're not really supposed to get into it.
Yes, if you have, you have something different, please.
Yeah, I, I know. And all I want to say is that this is just a small portion of the people representing our whole community here tonight. And probably everybody is, you know, is strong-willed and impacted and passionate. And I do feel like it is your duty to actually hear us because I have heard tonight, just kind of like, almost like y'all are in cahoots and some dissent.
Your name and address.
Oh, Nicole Verch, 6964 Denofrean Drive. So yeah, I don't even back up to all this, but I came because I love this community for all the reasons that everybody has said. And I don't think it's fair that most of the people who were up here speaking were met with defense and like we weren't hurt. And so it is your responsibility to hear us and to take all of these notes from what people said and consider it greatly because it's a big deal.
Robin, can I get a clarification on something?
Sure.
Will, 6831 Castleberry Millsport. Just two points of inquiry.
Just one second, please. I'm an alternate on the board, so I don't have the depth and of experiences everybody else. My understanding is that if the proposal meets our criteria, meets the zoning criteria, we basically don't have a choice here, right?
Well, you always have a choice, but the.
I mean, if we say no to all the divergences, we're gonna rearrange the houses so that there's actually less wooded area left.
It's, it's my right to do that. It's not to say that I would do that, but that's, yes, the answer.
But in order to fit in the 23 houses that you want there.
That's right.
So you would then present us with something that does comply without any divergences?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, I think my first meeting with Robin, I did bring in a sketch that showed that, just to show that it was, it was possible. I just don't think it's the right fit, which is I think the divergences allow.
So if you were to come back with that, this would actually be more objectionable than your plan.
I mean, it's hard to say what would be more objectionable, I think, the whole development.
We'd lose more green space. We'd lose more trees.
We would lose more of the natural green space.
Okay. So we have limited authority to block this development.
We have a right of referendum. We do have that. And it's, it's the fact that any change in zoning, this is not the current zoning, okay? So there's a change in zoning. I don't know what your authority is as the board members, I can't attest to that, but I know the township trustees has authority. And we do, as a neighborhood, have a right of referendum. And we are, we didn't want to go here and I'm, I'm not going here now because I, I don't necessarily agree that you guys are in cahoots. I think you're trying to be fair. I think we're all maybe getting a little emotional. I've got a little emotional because my kids have been affected by developments just like this. But we do have a right of referendum. And but we are not here to pick a fight. As I said before, we're not here even to push back against Mr. Wick's development. Mr. Wick, you really should have come to the neighbors, talk to us, let's see what can work for the neighbors. 23 lots is the problem. Can we talk about 15? Can we talk about 16? I don't think you.
Where I was going with this.
Sorry, sir, I'm so sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Where I was going with this is that if we are, as a board, kind of backed into having to approve this, whether any of us personally like it or not, it goes to the trustees. And the trustees can just say, no, because we don't like it. We have regulations that we have to work within. So as much as I appreciate all of the input and all the stories and all of the heartache, and I really do, Cheswick Village behind Meyer, next to Meyer, was built in my backyard, okay? I hear you. We're not the audience. When this moves through, as it probably will, you do go to the next meeting where they have the authority to just say, nope.
And let me just say, let me just claim my own voted authority here for the record. I, from, from my perspective, we do have a right to say yes or no, even with respect to it being in compliance, for whatever reason. At the end of the day, we do have a vote. So I don't subscribe to the notion that just because it's all in compliance. I've heard the, the community, and I really want to take those things into consideration. So I don't want it to be assumed here that we're just rubber stamping things. That's not necessarily the way it is. The majority of the time, yes, if it's in compliance, it meets the requirement, it is moved forward. But I also want it to be understood that that's just not necessarily an automatic given, at least from me. And so I don't want you to speak for my vote.
The way it's to hear.
Yes, okay, thanks.
We'll make you the last one, sir. Go ahead.
My name's Mark Will, 6831 Castleberry Millsport. I just had two points of questions, inquiry really, that maybe can be presented at the next hearing, since it's been tabled from time being. Two questions. Number one, we received very short notice that this was gonna be a topic of discussion at this hearing. Can we address that and find out why that was such a short notice hearing? And if we can make sure that all of our neighbors know about the tabled hearing meeting so that they can get input from all of those as well? And secondly, I'm not familiar with Mr. Wick. I don't know if he's had any past experience in land development in this area. What has that experience been like? Has it been smooth? Has it been difficult? Has it been, promises been met? Premises have been broken? I don't know. I'm assuming they've been met and if he's got lots of experience in this area, that we can kind of take that into consideration in making decisions going forward as well.
John, if you'd like to respond, you can. If you've got something different, we'll go ahead and hear it, please.
My name's Satya Yaramseti, 2776 Abbey Knoll Drive. And I have been living here from 2006 in the Abbey Knoll subdivision. My house is located right at the intersection of Rose Park and Abbey Knoll. So I am combining all the things and towards the end, I will give you my conclusion. I signed up in 2005 to, assuming that my kids are going to be Orange Middle School and Orange High School. Because at that time, Jeff Prujan was the builder, I mean Rockford Builder, Jeff Prujan was the manager. I was almost going out of the Rose Park Boulevard and I saw this future site for high school. Then immediately I turned and went back, hey Jeff, let's take a plan. I will sign the contract because my kids are going to be coming to this one. I was living in Hilliard at that time. So the future site was the turning point for my life to bring my kids to Valentine High School because I saw the site. At that time, there was no high school. So turning back, after signing the contract, 2005, 2006, I got my keys and I had a nice home. And that time, within a year or two, maybe two, three years, they said rezoning. And they said, my daughter can't go to Orange High School. They don't provide any transportation because the, because of the rezoning, all the students who are coming from Luzzell Road to the Orange Road, they have to accommodate them in Orange School. Whereas I signed 12 blocks, just 12 houses walked from Rose Park Boulevard from my home. I have to go to Shanhan Middle School and Valentine High School. Just 12 houses. Just because somebody occupied from Luzzell Road to the Orange Road, I have to, I have signed up for $300,000 home. And I have to go back to another five miles, Shanhan Middle School and Valentine High School. We felt the pain. That's okay. We did that. My kids graduated well, they're nicely placed in nice colleges. That's okay. We took the pain. Then recently, they attached the road to the, behind the Costco with this one. We all think that that's a better way this one. The roads were enhanced to four lane, Old State Road because of the traffic. So now my conclusion is, thinking all these things, we bought these homes thinking So now my conclusion is, thinking all these things, we bought these homes thinking that greenery, kids, and also traffic, three important things we consider before signing up the homes. And now, in this 20 years, I mean, not 20, 17 years, I have been seeing a lot of presentations here, builders like them coming up with a, some kind of a goal to get something to build here in this area. And residents like us coming up with all these constraints, talking about zoning. It's a zoning time, so many residents' time, this builder's time. It is high time to think of our zoning rules, to be revisited, how much percentage of greenery area, how much traffic density, how many people in a high schools. Think about these things. You are always talking about, "We are trustees, we have limitations, we have zoning rules, and we are, we are bonded to these rules." At the same time, you also think about revision of this one. Revision of our zoning rules to meet these three compliant conditions, to satisfy these events. If you are following 15-year back road zoning rules, spending lot of time from their side, spending much more time from residents, valuable time from trustees, all these are constraints. Why are we bringing this? Because we are referring a book and trying to map to the new needs. So it is high time to think about, like Dublin City, how much greenery area should be there. It is high time to think about New Albany, who are restricting not to increase the traffic in their roads. When other cities, other townships are doing it, why not Orange Township? Why we are still referring year-old zoning rules and causing lot of costly times? That's my, my concern. Want to express, this is costly time to the trustees and the clerical administrative staff to our own township, and most importantly, residents, kids. And of course, we have to promote builders, developers, to see nice subdivisions in our area also. Their time is also. Recently, the gender wave, we have struggled three years, two years, they came up with condos, then 26, then 13, whatever the number of homes. Every time we are spending this kind of struggle between three different people, we don't need this kind of wastage of resources time. It is high time to think about green percentage area. Please, please determine that immediately. That's my request. Thank you.
I'll tell you what, I personally think that was a nice conclusion, unless you really have something different.
I have a question. It's Nate Pollock, 3134 Abbey Knoll Drive. One question would be, if the divergences were not approved, and he were to cut down the trees, would he be building houses on top of the creek? Like, it seems unbuildable, so I'm just, that's just a question that maybe can be answered.
It wouldn't be, no.
Not without answer.
I wouldn't be building on top of the creek. Thank, thank, thank you very much for all of that. I'm going to, going to close this for tonight, and I'm sure we'll see you on the 24th.
That's right. So we do, we need a motion to... So we, we need a motion to continue...
Move that we can end this meeting on October 24th.
I'll second.
Yeah, let me, let me finish up here, we're still, we're still in session. So you gotta...
We're still in session.
We're still in session.
Give it, give it...
Yes.
We have a motion?
We have a question.
I'm second.
Motion, motion to continue the public hearing to October 24th. Excuse me.
Please, let, let us finish that. We just need to finish the meeting.
Sorry, we're, we're still in session, we're trying to, to wrap up some business, please keep the conversation quiet.
We just need a couple seconds of quiet so we can officially end the meeting.
All right, so motion to continue the public hearing to October 24th at 6:30 PM at 1680 East Orange Road. Motion was made by Ms. Foster, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Those voting, Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Freeman?
I abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
And we'll, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion what?
To adjourn.
All right, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
I abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
And we'll, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion what?
To adjourn.
All right, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned.
All right, second.
I...